I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming out. It's the public comments section. Public comments when I call your name. If you don't mind, come into the podium. Before you begin, we need your name and address for the record, at which point you'll have three minutes. When there's 30 seconds left, I will wave my hand and hopefully you'll begin to close. At three minutes, I will ask you to close and my phone will beep. A couple of guidelines is please keep your comments civil. So first, we have Mr. Larry Masstrata.
How are you?
Good, you?
Hi, I'm Larry Masstrata. I reside at 4 Blackberry Lane. I have two children who attend CMS. My wife Lisa is the president of the PTA. And I've been in education for 20 years with the last nine being an assistant principal at a public high school in New York State. I attended the board meeting two weeks ago to learn, I came to learn more about the privatization, possible privatization of the custodial staff. But the comments that were made earlier in the summer by Mr. Chiermonte were also a topic of the public participation. I was aware of the comments that were made by him and I wanted to say that I was equally troubled and disappointed by those statements. At that point, and watching the rest of the evening, I believe at this time, Dr. Rivera, Mr. Lyons, the board is fractured. While the issue of possible inequitable communication and other allegations are being resolved among the board, the board must continue to work for the students and staff of the district. Without a board that works together, this district will not move forward. Dr. Rivera, this must be your top priority. As a veteran superintendent, I know that you know just how important a working board is to meeting the needs of the students and the educational needs of the district. Let me be clear, I am not expecting board members to be friends or even to like one another. But each of you took an oath to work for the staff and the students of this district. While personal issues are being resolved, the work of the board must continue. I expect healthy, constructive debate among board members in public as well as executive session. But comments and votes must be based on the best interests of the district. Board members have an obligation to vote regardless of personal feelings towards each other and do what they believe is in the best interest of our children. One of my case in point here of a fractured board is that tonight, there'll be a vote on an outside vendor of the district regarding custodial services. There's been much talk of possible privatization of our custodial staff even only on a limited basis. I don't feel the process has been fully explored or explained to the community's satisfaction. I see in tonight's board packet, the RFP for the private cleaning firm, and I've only had a few minutes to review it and I know it's been online, I'm not sure when it went online, I have to say, it wasn't that very easy to find given the enormity of what you're asking the board to vote on and for the community to embrace. I recognize that the BOE is mindful of the taxpayers and will tout savings and privatization. However, there are many services that the current custodians do that might incur a cost to the local schools. For example, the PTA runs many events and the head custodian goes out of his way to ensure the facility is appropriate for the event. I know firsthand, all that he does is not listed in his job description. This is a common occurrence across all of our schools at all levels. Will the services that aren't included in the RFP be passed on to schools, parents, and the PTAs? This is a slippery slope, I feel.
Three minutes.
Thanks, give me one second here. This is a slippery slope, I feel, and the local school communities will feel some of the burden of privatization. The board must remember why they ran for the board and the oath you took at the beginning of your term.
I have to ask you to oppose.
Otherwise, the public will remind you on election day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Anna Duleep.
Hello, I'm Sheriff Anna Duleep, 3 Briarwood Road. Most of you know my background, but just to refresh your memory, I am one of the former council, common council members who voted against privatization of trash pickup for the city despite purported savings and so you know, that's kind of the bias that I'm coming from. I also happen to be a certified math teacher who keeps renewing my initial educator license for as many times as they'll let me or until the state figures out where they're going with teacher evaluation and the common core implementation, whichever comes first. So I work as a private tutor specializing in test prep. So with that in mind, beyond the, my philosophical differences which may differ from yours as far as the privatization of municipal services, which we have seen across the country, I just need to say the word Scott Walker and you understand where I'm going. I wanted to draw your attention to part of the contract, which I hope, perhaps I missed something in my cursory reading of it, doing homework right before the meeting, but Section 4 Personnel and Contract Employees, Section C, both parties acknowledge and agree that owner does not have the right to supervise, terminate, or otherwise discipline any of contractor's personnel. Contractor acknowledges and agrees that in the event that owner believes that personnel of contractor are, and then it lists various things that would not be good conduct, I shall say. Now, anybody who's worked in a school, good luck with not intervening when you see that somebody is not behaving in an appropriate manner. I find it's often hard for me to turn that off at 3 o'clock and realize that adults can be adults and, you know, run around and say what they want. But I, as a former councilperson and, you know, a somewhat member of city government right now, I would urge strong caution in giving up control with clauses like that. I don't know if that's something that you can negotiate or something that you want to just outright reconsider this plan, but, you know, consider if, instead of hiring me as a substitute teacher, you subcontracted to my tutoring service and I came into the schools and I behaved in a manner that was inappropriate in front of a building full of mandated reporters. Are we seriously saying that, and I'll wrap it up, that you would not be able to intervene if you saw something going on there? Just one last note, sometimes that one person who sees what's special in a child and is the person that they remember 20 years from now, it isn't the teacher, the principal, it's the janitor. So please keep that in mind before you take this vote. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Mr. Stanley Shuler.
My name is Stanley Shuler, President of Local 1042. I reside in Stafford, Connecticut. Just want to say-
I have your address, the whole address, please.
Yeah, 97 McKinley Avenue, Stafford, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I want to go on record and say, we disagree with the outsourcing of our jobs. Like I said before, and I said it 100 times, we're really disappointed of the way this came about. As a union, we should be meeting together and discussion about the outsourcing or any kind of changes in our contract. Susan Mark, who had left here, came to us a couple of years ago, we sat down and talked to her about saving money and this and that and just so we can keep our jobs and we took a hit for a couple of years for that, one of the first unions does that. So now, you know, now this time around, it's been secrecy, half the board knows and half the board doesn't know, and how can you vote on something like that? You guys took office to be upfront and honest, not only to the community, but to your office, you know? I totally disagree with what you guys are doing, outsourcing our work. We have a lot of dedicated people, it's more than this nickel and dime saving $90,000, something you just can't put price on. We do a lot, like I said before, we're community based, supposed to be like a family, and now you turn to the board into a corporation. So you're, that's what we are now, we're a corporation. We have like the governor and Blumenthal and these guys, Obama, are trying to keep our unions together and keep jobs and health business for the people, but now, no, don't do that. Don't be the first one to make a decision like this, to be the first superintendent or the first board to outsource our work. I mean, the days old when Dr. Shalone was here and a few others people when things was going on strong, we always gave back, we worked with people, but right now, what the guys are doing, they're making deals behind backdoor, just saying stuff and not even including us in from upper management and so on and so forth. Like I said many times before, I'm upset because it should be a dialogue, that's, I don't see with the board and I don't see with the management that we have. We're starting to talk, it fell off a little bit, now we're trying to get back together, but without communication, giving back and taking, we're lost. You have to have community, you have to sit down and talk whether you disagree with someone or not, at least hear them out. My problem is, you guys really don't come to the union or come to the custodians, ask our opinion on how we can improve stuff, you just take management side, yeah, they're going to say the best thing for them because they're trying to keep their jobs, you know what I mean? But there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind closed doors, you guys don't know. I've been the president for like a year and a half, not one board member came to me and asked me how the custodians are doing, how can we improve the system? I think that's kind of bad. It's two sides to the story, right side, wrong side, but I just want to say it's a hole in the wall and God sees and knows what's behind closed doors. You can fool one another, you can fool us, but you can't fool God. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Carmelo Soma.
Good evening, my name is Carmelo Soma. I reside in Norwalk, Connecticut, 17 Shaleen Road. I'm a custodian at Norwalk High School. I have three daughters that go to, two of them are my twins that go to Narimak and my oldest goes to Nathan Hale. The thing that I'm troubled with right now is that my 13-year-old, I lost my wife last year and I'm raising my daughters by myself.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. What bothers me so much is my 13-year-old daughter shouldn't be thinking about what's going on in the school system, but coming to me and saying, Daddy, I saw a little episode on Channel 12 News, what's going on with your job, what's going on with Mr. Shuler, is he going to lose his job, are you going to lose your job, are all the custodians going to lose their jobs? And I said, honey, I don't know how to answer you right now. First of all, 13-year-old shouldn't be saying that to her daddy when she already had a big loss. I don't think it's fair to her, I don't think it's fair to no kids in Norwalk schools. Only thing I know is, I'm a taxpayer. I live in Norwalk, I work for Norwalk, and I love Norwalk. My kids love Norwalk. The only problem that I have is, we privatized our trash, we privatized our recycling, now we're privatizing our school system and what do we think of our kids? What example is this for our kids? That's where I come down to this. To you, superintendent, you're doing a great job, everybody's doing a great job, but we're also doing a great job because we have very, we're very happy what we're doing and we do not want to lose our jobs, but the way we are losing our jobs is not fair to us and it's not fair to our kids. So please, think it all over. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Charlie Wyatt.
Good evening, my name is Charlie Wyatt. I reside at 231 Lincoln Avenue currently in the city of Bridgeport. I've been a custodian here for the past six years at several schools right now, I'm at Cranberry Elementary School. And my problem with privatization is more than just custodians losing their jobs, it's the people you're bringing in, we don't know who they are. The parents of our children don't know who they are and as a parent, that kind of disgusts me as well as worry me. Who's coming into the schools? You've said nothing about who's coming, what their qualifications are, what their background check results were, we know nothing. It's been one big secret. And since you were elected to work here for these citizens, I think you're responsible to these citizens to answer those questions. Who were you bringing inside Norwalk Public Schools? That question hasn't been answered, we've been at several of these meetings and I still haven't heard an answer to any of those questions. So we ask you, who are these people? What are their qualifications? What are their criminal backgrounds or do they have records? I believe some do, and the question is, why are you bringing them in? I understand you want to save a buck, but the truth is, in the RFP that I was reading, they don't do half the stuff that we do. They're only responsible for cleaning, we do so much more than that. We've built relationships in this city with these kids and these parents and it's not fair to these kids for you to pull that away from them, what happens to them in the process? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. John Mosby.
Good afternoon, board, my name is John Mosby. I live at 15 Addison Avenue. I'm going to be very brief here tonight. Number one, I support the custodians and privatizing. In 19, I think in 1993, we beat the board on privatization. We beat the city to vote and the awards is up there. You all are ignoring that. I want the custodians, them, if they do this tonight, y'all file charges, cost them a lot of money. Number two, I want to move back. I'm not happy with the way these minutes are kept by the board. The public say they don't understand it because these minutes got a tendency of being rigged. Y'all are rigging these minutes. And I want to say to the public today, and I'm going to stand up for these three board members, Shirley, Ms. Rosemary, and Ms. Medalla, they are doing their job, they're doing what the law says, and y'all are violating these bylaws. These bylaws and these boards, you ain't supposed to play no politics with no superintendent. These bylaws and everybody said, you want, just go to the blog, the press won't print them. You ain't supposed to play with politicians and all this stuff. And I'm going to tell you today, I'm going to stand by. We elected them, we love them, and y'all keep doing your job. And tomorrow morning, I done wrote Governor Mellon, I'm one myself as a citizen, and I'm going to ask him and that board of directors up there to come here and investigate this thing. The board, the state do have something to say, well, where y'all carrying on around here? Y'all are playing politics, you violating every law, you buying off everybody, done brought the principal off, you done brought the unions off, you playing politics, give them a good grant over here and the press won't print that. You trying to, this is a violation of law and code of equity. You can be moved, both, and you all guys ain't doing your job. And if you, if they don't do it, I'm going to see the President of the United States and Senator Blumenthal and ask them, because that's what we elected them for. These folks that come here and help us, it's too much of this bull-jabbing in this town, backroom dealing, getting all this money, scamming over here, bridge up there, you using, I'm glad Prowl leaving there today, he won't know good, I wrote him so many letters, he lied to me at that Norwalk, I'm glad he leaving. Scamming this money, his money laundering, you guys could go to jail, you just need an investigation. Thank you very much.
Just a second. Okay, last, we have Mr. Bobby Avrantiakis.
My name is Bobby Avrantiakis. I live at 75 George Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut for the past 30 years. I'm a proud Greek-American and the first one to join the custodians' al. Democracy was born in Greece, but some politicians forget one important rule. The first rule of democracy is that we elect people to serve us, the people, no private interest. We are not a problem and we have not a solution. We work hard and we are taxed harder. We, the people, pay for everything in our city, from new roads to heavy salaries. We work in heat, rain, good days and snow days. When it's snow, we have to report to work and shovel snow until it's safe for the kids to pull back. For 10 years, we live in fear of losing our jobs while we have a Republican mayor. He raised our taxes three times and froze our income two times. Finally, we elected a Democrat and we thought our fear would go away. We were wrong, I was wrong. It seems some politicians are angry for losing the mayoral race and want to take revenge on the people. We are all here because of the kids. Nobody would have a job unless for the kids, that's our first priority. A lot of questions were asked at the last time and I hear no answers, why? Finally, don't forget, you are elected to serve us, the people, no private interest. One more thing, when I cast my vote for a certain person in a political party, I like that person to stay in that party. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that is all that's signed up for public comments, Mr. Chairman? Okay, thank you. Next item, item four, superintendent's report, Dr. Rivera. Sure, I thought it would be appropriate this evening to share some of the highlights, not everything, but some of the highlights of our opening of school report. As you know, our students will be here in our schools a week and a half, actually next Wednesday. We have convocation on Monday, the 25th, when all staff will be reporting, followed by the phasing in of our enrollment on Wednesday, the 27th and, let me see, the 27th, right. So let me just go through some of the highlights here. We've already begun some professional learning activities. We went through a process and hired 12, actually nine in addition to the existing three, curriculum and instruction site directors. We convened an all-day welcome for them on August 14th. There's a major full day training, if you will, on our literacy essentials and the commitments that I made to you, that you approved in the K-5 literacy presentation back in February. All of our administrators were here today, receiving a full day of training and special education, everything ranging from development of proper IEPs to a host of other requirements. And if any board member is interested, we can certainly send you some of the details of that. Tomorrow, all day, we'll be focusing on our performance goals in our strategic plan. You had approved a mission, a vision, a set of goals, a set of priorities. I'm going to be distributing to you tonight, goals that I am proposing to you for consideration in my evaluation. And these goals are directly, they're quantitative measures of performance that are going to be directly aligned with what we are asking our schools to pay attention to, and they're focused around literacy, around tracking the performance of every individual child so they're on track to be reading at or above grade level of grade three. We want our grade five students ready for middle school, we want our eighth graders ready for grade nine, and we don't want to lose any single individual ninth grader, make sure that they're ready for 10th grade. That's what will tee us up for higher graduation rates and more appropriate movement towards closing the achievement gap. So I'm going to be distributing to you in a sealed envelope, the quantitative objectives for your consideration at a later date. Teachers, all report as well and we have, actually, there's a new teacher orientation this Friday, they will be involved. We have actually a couple of groups, you remember, you may remember the presentation that Tony DiTrio and I did when there was a discussion about student engagement. Well, two schools, Tracy and Kendall, will be going through a full day of training on the 25th. The Journeys folks from our literacy program are here on the 26th and they'll be providing training in Journeys. Staffing, our middle and high schools are complete, there's some final paperwork being done right now for individuals. Elementary schools is still a work in progress, there are about nine vacancies that we have to fill. Specific schools, there are a few specific schools with certain staffing issues, those are going to be resolved tomorrow. We want to make certain that folks can be assigned and onboard and ready to go by Friday. And one of the things that we've talked about doing as we look at upgrading our data systems is in the future, when we present reports, that we can actually come to you and show you what our staffing numbers looked like over the last couple of years, what they looked like as we projected them from elementary right on through high school. This is the kind of system we need to better track our information. Facilities, Narimak Elementary School will be ready, we expect, there's an inspection tomorrow, we expect to have a certificate of occupancy, hopefully if that inspection goes well. All of our, from our safety initiative, inner classroom locks will be completed by the end of this week with key distribution by Friday. Our Norwalk Early College Academy is on schedule, we've purchased some new cleaning maintenance equipment and there's been some training that's been underway for our custodial staff. I don't know if you remember, in Columbus Elementary School, they won a $30,000 Rachel Ray grant to upgrade their kitchen and that's near completion. I'm told that the facility itself is ready, they're still waiting on some equipment. There's some new lighting put in at Norwalk High and Bryan McMahon through a rebate program and it's actually saved $20,000 in savings. We also want to pursue our locker room upgrades at Norwalk High in particular this fall, as well as paving and striping work to be done this fall at a number of schools. Technology, Power School, as you know, we've been going through a big transition, this is not easy, it has been complicated, it's a new system. We made it available in what we termed a sandbox, if you will, to allow people to begin getting connected with that system. And it's up and running and obviously more and more people have had training, but, you know, we're going to continue to provide the support. This first few months, there could be some glitches, I'm not going to sit here and say that everything's going to be perfect, that there may not be some glitches in the use of that system, but it is a work in progress and it is by far the best system out there, which is why we went to it and we were one of the few districts in the state of Connecticut that had not. The high schools, obviously, finalizing schedule for all students is a priority. We've actually allocated additional days for staff at the schools to, as needed, to make sure that that gets done. And we provided videos that we have produced for staff to be able to use so they know how to get access and input attendance and courses for grade book. In fact, there's a letter here, you can't see it, but we'll certainly send it to you electronically, which we're going to be sending to every single parent, English, Spanish, and other languages as we need them. And this letter will give clear instructions and a new ID number and a password to assure parents that they will have access to their, through the parent portal, to information about their child. Computers, we've ordered laptops for every teacher, grade six through 12, they're going to be deployed on a school-by-school basis beginning in mid-September. Last year, we purchased 2,400 Chromebooks for our students, we've ordered an additional 2,100 for distribution by the end of September. Even our fields, we're going to make wireless, if you will, our press boxes at the Bryan McMahon and Norwalk High School have not had the ability to connect wirelessly through the internet and we're waiting for a date from Cablevision to have that done relatively quickly. Business services, RFP for school furniture has been issued, PA systems, blinds, closed-circuit TV systems to be ordered. The RFP for facility utilization is going to be issued this fall. Our FY 1314 have ended on a positive note for the second year in a row. Our positive financial forecast for our insurance trust fund, there is a positive financial forecast for our insurance trust fund. New data systems, this is really important. We, our data and the connection between what we have sometimes in payroll and personnel- We, our data and the connection between what we have sometimes in payroll and personnel and finance doesn't always link up. We have to have what most, many organizations have, it's called position control, where those are in sync, and we can actually track more closely, for example, some of our savings. If we don't fill a position, and then we fill it late, we can actually track more accurately the savings that we would have and be able to project with greater specificity our savings or losses, if you will. Uniform chart of accounts between both local and grand financial reporting is also going to be in place in a few months. Transportation, the routes are being finalized this week. Routes will be ready for distribution on Saturday, August 23rd. I believe what we've done in the past here in Norwalk, it's been displayed in the hour. If there are other ways that we can display those, those routes for parents, we will do so. The special needs and district routes have been completed and finalized. And also with communication, we're working on, obviously, getting that letter out to parents, but also a new opening of school message. And these are just some of the highlights as we gear up for the opening of school right around the corner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to section five, actions. First item is the consent calendar, which is 52A, approval of personnel, 52B, approval of budget transfers. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Mr. Kessimus moves. Is there a second?
I'd like to remove item, the budget, the budget transfer separately, please, from the consent.
Okay, we'll take that off. Just to complete the process, I need a second for the original motion also. Okay, second. Any other changes to come off the consent calendar? Mr. Chiermonti?
On the personnel, Bryan McMahon has master position to be tabled. Bryan--
Okay, well, we'll just take it off consent.
Take it off consent.
Okay, housemaster, off consent. Okay. So we'll proceed to a vote on the consent calendar, is all of the personnel items except the housemaster at Bryan McMahon, and we have, and the budget transfers are off, so it's just the personnel matters. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the consent calendar, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, unanimous, thank you. All right, so back to personnel. The one item that was not on consent is appointment of Housemaster Bryan McMahon High School. So we follow the procedure properly. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Kadir Abdussalam as Housemaster at Bryan McMahon High School, is their motion?
Can we all show him to table this?
Well, wait a minute. You have to have a primary motion before you can table something. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Mosby moves. Is there a second? Ms. Rivas seconds. Okay, motion is moved and seconded to approve the appointment of the housemaster at Bryan McMahon. Now, Mr. Chiermonti?
I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to table this. I understand Mike Warbus, who is quite active in the Bryan McMahon community, has asked that he'd like to be part of this vote, so I'd like to table just till the next meeting.
All right, there's a motion to table. Is there a second on the motion to table? A second, it's keys. All right, motion to table is not debatable, so we will proceed to a vote. All in favor of the tabling motion, please indicate. One, two, three. All opposed? One, two, three. Abstentions? One abstention. Three-to-three motion fails. Primary motion is therefore back on the agenda. Is there any discussion on the appointment of Mr. Abdussalam to this position? Dr. Rivera, you want to give us some background? I'm sorry, Ms. Mosby? No, Dr. Rivera, you want to give us background?
No, we had a situation where we advertised and posted the vacancy at Bryan McMahon High School. There was a screening committee that was established, a central screening committee. That committee advanced a number of names to the school committee. So there was this, so he made the first cut unanimously, along with a number of other candidates. It then went to the school committee. The school committee was comprised of, I believe, about 10 people. That included parents, staff, principal of Bryan McMahon, and others. And this individual was one of three individuals that was recommended to me. In my interview of the three, he did very well. I also felt that another candidate had some greater experience. I advanced the other candidate. That other candidate informed us this past week that she could not accept the position. So I felt very comfortable advancing Mr. Salam for the position, because I felt he had a very good interview, and I think he'll do a fine job.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? Ms. Mosby?
I, Sat and I reviewed his resume as well, and he seems to have some very deep credentials. And he seems like a pretty good choice. And I'm glad to hear, Dr. Vera, that you said, going through the whole entire process of the interviewing committees and all that, that he was one of your top choices. So I'm quite pleased with that, so.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of appointing Mr. Abdussalam, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, five in favor, two abstentions. Motion is approved, and Mr. Abdussalam is appointed. All right, next item on the agenda is approve and authorize superintendent to enter into contractual agreement for recruitment and placement specialist, Nicole D. Davis.
Order of information?
Yes.
We, we didn't do the budget transfers?
Your point is well taken, I apologize.
I can hear real well.
It's right over. We will proceed to the budget transfers.
Okay.
All right. Do you, do you care if these are moved as one item, or do you want to handle them separately?
Oh, we can have one item, it's the, it's the--
Okay.
The 4700, one I want to remove.
Okay, so you're okay with the other two?
Yes, yes.
All right. So Chair would entertain a motion to approve the second and third items on the list, which is HR labor relations conferences and enhancement to HR recruitment at the amount of $8,700 and $2,500. It's the motion to approve those two items only. Mr. Kessimus, second. Ms. Rivas, any discussion on those two items? Yes, Ms. Mosby?
Can Mr. Rudolph give us more explanation on them? Thank you.
The transfer is for SubFinder. It's a software system that we use currently to locate substitutes for when teachers are out. We recently had conversations with the company that has SubFinder, and one of the benefits of going forward with this is that we'd be allowed to have SubFinder in a hosted environment, and more of a web-based environment. It also allows more access at the schools to have access to SubFinder, as opposed to just one central person in HR. So the reason for the transfer is we're trying to expand the use of SubFinder and the actual capabilities that the program has above and beyond what we've used in the past.
And which one of these transfers is that?
It's the first one.
The 8,700?
The 4,705.
Okay, that one we're not talking about. The motion is on the other two.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, we'll get back to the, we'll get back to the first one.
Sorry about that. The second one is, since Mr. Palmer's been on board and we've reorganized our HR staff, one of the things that we want to be more active in is recruitment of new employees. And so we'd like to have a more active presence, whether it be at recruitment fairs or colleges, so that we can actively recruit a stronger and more diverse workforce. So with that comes fees to actually register with different recruitment fairs and college fairs. So typically for Norwalk, we've only spent about $1,000 on recruitment fairs every year. It's really just to have us go to one fair a year. The goal really with having a recruiting specialist is so that we can actually go out to colleges more often, recruitment fairs more often. And so this allotment of money is so that we can go over and above just the one conference fair that we go to.
And those are conference fairs. Will you be able in the future, do you have a list to the board so that we can at least see--
Sure.
--what you're going, because you just said about diversity is--
Sure.
--and that way we can review.
Yes.
Thank you.
And while we're on it, the third one, which is the $2,500 transfer?
The last one is really to have the ability for our HR specialists to attend conferences so that they can be more up to date on changing rules and regulations that relate to health, human resources laws and regulations, so that they can be more up to speed in a changing environment.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Comments? Ms. Rivas?
Yes, on that, the object code and the project code are the same on that, but you just have a different description.
Correct, so they would be, they would be different allotments of money, but they would still be considered like attendance at meetings and conferences and retain, and retention. So we essentially, we carve out the bucket of money between two line items that sit in the same general ledger account.
So how will you distinguish the difference that you've spent? So you're only putting 8,700 in two meetings, and then you're putting--
Right. So when we have, when we look at our financials, we have the ability to look at every expense that hits a general ledger account, which is an object code. So when we look at that specific general ledger account, we can see the different invoices that hit that account.
So would you be putting in a different project number in there to add on to that?
No, because it's all, because it's all HR-related. Project 53 is HR, so if we put in a different project code, it would not be an HR function.
So it's all going in the same pot?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none, this is again, is a vote on the second and third items. All in favor of approving these transfers, please indicate. Is unanimous? It's approved. All right, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the first item, which is $4,705 for enhancement to HR recruitment. Is there a motion?
No, I have questions on this.
We have to have the motion--
Oh, I have a motion?
More questions, okay. Motion to approve, seconded by Ms. Murray. Now we're on the, on the floor. You have the floor.
Okay, where is the person I'm questioning?
I think we need you back.
Is he there? Is there somebody standing there?
Yeah, the first item.
He's coming. We're back on the first item now. Chair?
No, I'm a little blurred, I can't see him.
He is there now.
Okay, hello.
Hi.
Okay, all right, now, this is, this money is being transferred to this object code and project code. Now, it says repairs and maintenance. Why would it say repairs and maintenance?
So all our software programs hit our 430 account, which is repairs and maintenance. So whether it's an IT technology software, or whether it's SubFinder, or whether it's ProTrax, any software-related item always hits our object 430.
So shouldn't, shouldn't, you're saying IT-related? Doesn't IT have its own department with its own--
They do. This is not an IT software program. It's an HR-specific software program, SubFinder. But just as IT software, whether it's Microsoft Office or Study Island, they all hit essentially a 430 account. So, because you have maintenance charges that you have to pay, aside from the initial purchase of the equipment.
Okay, so when the money, when the money is, is reserved for, for software, so it wouldn't fall under IT if it's--
Not for SubFinder, because it's an HR software. It's not maintained by our IT department.
Okay, so, okay, so maintenance and repairs of that particular software?
Correct.
What is the company?
SubFinder.
That's the name of the company?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Mosby?
When we go in and start, I guess, getting, putting together the budget, is there a possibility of us looking into having its own line item for like these HR expenses?
We do have to have a uniform chart of accounts when we do the EDO1. So every year, we have to file a state report at the end of August, and so we are obligated to have these type of chart of accounts set up.
That's, that's what I was asking, because I'm hearing you taking it from one account. That's why I was wondering if you had any, something set up.
Okay. Any other questions, issues? All right, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the first transfer, please indicate. Are unanimous, thank you. All right, that brings us to, correctly brings us to, approve and authorize superintendent to enter into contractual agreement for exempt position, recruitment and placement specialist, Nicole Davis. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the appointment. Mr. Kessimus moves. Is there a second? Ms. Keyes seconds. Dr. Rivera, you want to bring us up to speed on this one?
Well, I'll simply indicate that one of the individuals that had been previously approved by the board also declined to join the organization. So it was reopened. There was actually a set of interviews that even I was involved in with two other individuals. So we interviewed two finalists, and I was impressed with both, but felt that Nicole, with her experience, knows the system, had good HR experience in another district, felt that she'd be a good fit in the organization, and so we advanced her name to you.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Mosby?
I just want to say that, thank you for giving us the update on the other person and as well as this. I'm quite pleased to hear that there was an interview committee following the process. And I'm looking at the way this was put together, the job description, the posting, the posting information, all this resume, and it, you know, it looks good. And I just wanted to say that I like the way this process is being followed, and it's out there in the public, for the public to see as well. And I will be supporting this, since we had the committee, and the resume was there, and the experience, we can see what the experience level is, and it did meet the qualification on the job posting. So I'm, I'm all for this, just wanted to let you know. And thank you, Dr. Vera, for giving us that.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the appointment of Nicole D. Davis as recruitment and placement specialist, please indicate. And it is unanimous, thank you. Next is approval of Second Amendment to license agreement by and between law public schools and All-Star Driver. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Kessimus moves. Is there a second? Ms. Rivas seconds. Mr. Kessimus, why don't you just give a quick summary on this?
Absolutely. Two years ago, we brought in, we did an RFP to bring in driver's ed into our schools, make it convenient for our high schoolers. It's been a big hit. First year, I think we had about 30 in each school, and last year, we doubled that. In addition, not only is it a convenience to our, our students and our parents, because they take driver's ed right in the school, they can take their driver's test, they can do everything right there, they go out on the road right there. We also get $50 in return for every single student that signs up. Also, All-Star Driver has made significant donations to other departments, drama, I don't know if they did the band specifically, but other areas as well. So they are investing in the schools as well. We're looking to do a third year.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Ms. Rivas?
Would that also include Bryan McMahon?
Yes, the two high schools.
Both high schools are in this?
Both high schools. And they also give scholarships, I believe, to two students in each school as well, based on need. Yes?
I'm glad to hear about the driver, because other states, you know, where I know children are at, their high schools have this component. So it's, you know, it's good to hear that we've stepped up to where we have in our school.
Yeah, when I went to high school, I took driver's ed as well, in my school. So it's kind of odd when I got up here and it wasn't here.
I did too.
And that wasn't too long ago.
No, no, a few years. All right, any other comments, questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the extension of the contract with All-Star Driver, please indicate. Unanimous for all. Thank you. All right, next, item five. I think we should deal with these both together, so we can have Tony DeDonna bring us up to speed on them. Items five and six, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Administrator Evaluation Professional Learning Plan 1415 and the Teacher Evaluation Professional Learning Plan 1415. Is there such a motion? Mr. Chiermonti moves. Ms. Keyes seconds. Mr. DeDonna, tell us all about it.
The process involved in, in developing a professional learning plan for administrator evaluations and teacher evaluations consisted of a teacher evaluation committee that was giving us advice and participating in the development of the evaluation, also a administrator evaluation committee that participated in developing the administrator's evaluation. And the process is basically based on state law, and it's the C document. As a district, all districts are obligated to follow the C document, and Norwalk Public Schools did follow that. We have to submit the evaluations to the State Department for approval first, and then, once they approve our evaluations, both teachers and administrators, then we have to present it to the board for their approval. So thus far, we have received approval of the administrator's evaluation and the teacher's evaluation plan from the state of Connecticut. The administrator's evaluation plan is based on a 40% rating on observation of leadership performance, a 10% rating on stakeholders' feedback, and by stakeholders' feedback, I mean parents and teachers. They also are rated on a 45% on student learning and-- They also are rated on a forty-five percent on student learning, and a five percent on teacher effectiveness. And what that means is how their teachers performed in their school as they worked on their student learning objectives. In the administrators' evaluation, again, we look at leadership practice. There are six leadership practices: vision, mission, and goals, teaching and learning, organization systems, families and stakeholders, ethics and integrity, and educational systems. We really look at teaching and learning, and weigh most of that on teacher, teaching and learning, and then we weigh in on the other five leadership practices. There is also a component on, as I said, stakeholders' feedback, and that's ten percent. And those are done by surveys to both parents and teachers. Component three is student learning, which is forty-five percent. And we look at twenty-two and a half percent is how the students in their school perform on state administrator assessments, and that's the SPECT testing, when that will be in effect. And twenty-two and a half percent will be based on two locally determined indicators for student learning, and those are district assessments. And again, component four is teacher effectiveness. New to the plan that we did not have last year was an improvement and remediation section for administrators for functioning in the developmental stage. And we have three areas where when a teacher, when an administrator isn't performing well, we will give them structured support, we will give them special assistance, and then we will go to intensified assistance. And if they're still not performing after those three areas, then we will go for dismissal.
Yes, Dr. Rivera.
I just want to make what I think is a very, very important connection with what we've been talking about, about student culture, and student engagement, and student progress monitoring and intervention. In the state forms that we submitted, twenty-nine pages of standards, right? And all these forms, and you have to check off. What, what we've been working on, and what we're actually getting into with more detail tomorrow with our administrators, and we've actually had a committee of administrators supporting us, is to try to get really clear about what's important here in Norwalk that's directly in sync with those evaluations. So we've had a lot of discussion around expectations about, about culture, and what that means, and what that would look like, and how do you create a school and culture, a school culture that is engaging, and classroom culture that, that is, one, built around respect, one built around professionalism, one built around engaging students, and what does that mean? So we've actually been honing the expectations and the indicators of what we would expect to see when Tony and I are out visiting with our principals and visiting with our schools. So that when we have professional discussions with them, that, that can contribute to meaningful performance appraisal, if you will, as part of that. Second important part are the SLOs. That is where we draw the direct connection between the, the goals that we've set as a district, with the goals that I'm going to ask you to consider for me, and the objectives with what we expect of schools, in terms of tracking student performance towards grade three, towards preparedness for grade six, preparedness for grade nine, preparedness for grade ten. So there's a direct, as they set SLOs, it's in sync with what the expectation is. That's key. And that's what we really want to drive home and work with our people on, and that's how we build, I think, a professional appraisal system that has ownership. We understand what those standards are, we understand what it means to meet those standards, and then our appraisals should be, should be reflecting that. That's some of the work that's been going on, that I think will make it even stronger than what we've had.
Tony, a couple of questions. One is, the teachers would be evaluated by the school principals and also by the curriculum instruction site directors?
The, the teachers will be evaluated by the school principals, or the assistant principals, or the house masters. In the event that they need a second opinion, or it's a curriculum-related issue, then the instructional specialist will come in.
Okay. And, and who evaluates the administrative people? Who, you know, who does the principal evaluations and evaluations of other administrators?
The, I will be doing the principals' evaluations, and the principals will be doing the assistant principal evaluations.
Okay.
Tony, one, one modification?
Yes.
The curriculum instruction site directors?
Right.
Will also be, they're, they're part of the, they will be doing teacher evaluations. And so when Tony talks about assistant principals?
Right.
You're really talking about the same position?
Same thing.
Okay. And there was, I talked to Bruce Vali just before the meeting, and he just clarified that this has been a cooperative process.
Yes.
And are there any issues that either the NASTA union or the NFT union have with these?
No, I, I believe we work very cooperatively together. We work hand in hand. When we went into the teacher evaluation, we realized that the Danielson model was working very good for Norwalk, and the Danielson model pointed out where our student needs needed to be addressed, where the teachers' needs needed to be addressed. So when we were looking at the teachers' model, when we looked at observations of teachers' performance and practice, that forty percent is based on the Danielson model.
Okay.
That's different from what the state suggested. However, the state did approve the Danielson model for Norwalk Public Schools, and we've had success with that. Also, in the teacher evaluation, again, forty percent is based on that observation, and that's the Danielson model. Ten percent is based on parent feedback, and we do surveys for that. We have forty-five percent based on student learning objectives, and we look at twenty-two and a half percent of that is based on state, state testing, and twenty-two and a half percent of that will be based on our district benchmarks. And then, of course, five percent is based on whole school measurement. Again, as in the administrators' evaluation, we do have a remediation plan built into the teachers' plan. So if the teacher is below, is developing, we will put them into a remediation plan to give them support to move forward.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Rivas.
Yes, Mr. Dedona. Who will be evaluating the school psychologist, the speech therapist, the physical therapist, and the occupational therapist, or the OTA, the assistants? I'm not quite sure whether you have PTAs or OTAs. And the social workers in, in particular, because on the, in, in special education, my understanding was that sometimes principals evaluate a speech therapist, and, and also, as well as the other therapists, are evaluated by the principal, the house master. So how would that be handled with the, the administration, the teacher evaluation? Who will specifically be dealing with specialties in this area?
Okay, unique to the Danielson model is that we, we have standards based for social workers, for school psychologists, for speech and language. So all of those specialties have certain goals and objectives within the Danielson model that they have to follow, as teachers have goals and objectives. And those are site-based, meaning principals and assistant principals or curriculum direct, uh, site directors will be evaluating them. In the event that there is a question, we will bring in our special ed department to offer them support.
I'd like to have a follow-up, a question?
Certainly.
So why isn't the, the people personnel department directly doing the evaluations on the therapists if it falls under that department?
It's the principals and the assistant principals who are present in the building. They're attending PPT meetings. They're look, they're observing when they're doing group counseling. Our special ed administrators are not in that building every single day to observe that.
Okay.
And most of their work is done through PPTs, developing IEPs, looking at behavioral plans.
Okay.
And so the, the site administrator has direct hands-on to what's going on there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kessimus?
Mr. Dedona, in the past, whenever we had parents involved, looking for survey feedback, things like that, it's always been low. How do we plan on increasing parental participation in terms of the feedback?
Our, our first year, we had forty-five percent feedback. This year, we had twenty-two percent, and we will be hiring a firm that will be sending this information out. And what we learned this year was that we have to start earlier with that parent feedback, and we will be doing that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
And again, on the parent feedback, I, I just have to add something. I think we all learn our lessons. Our, our PTOs and our governance councils have input in that. What we've learned from the company that we're using is that if, if your, if your questionnaire is too long, people don't answer it. So we try to go concise, and as each school has their own governance council, if they don't have a governance council, we use the PTO to offer input into those.
Thank you.
I, I would just like to build on a little bit of what Tony shared, and also, in response, Commissioner Rivas, to your question. When we added an additional special ed administrator and changed their title to Special Education Instructional Supervisor, one of the things that Mr. Dedona said was that the expectation would be that principals and/or the curriculum instruction site people would be, as needed, involving those as part of the supervisory process. So my assumption is that they will probably be more involved at some level as part of that supervisory process than they have in the past.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, then we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving items five and six. Administrator and teacher evaluation learning plans, please indicate. Unanimous. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is seven. Approval to contract with recommended custodial service provider, United Services. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the proposed agreement with United Services for custodial services. Is there a motion? Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kessimus, is there a second? I'll second it. Motion is made and seconded for approval of contract with custodial service provider. Mr. Roodel, why don't you walk us through what's entailed, how we found these guys, what their duties will be, et cetera?
On June twenty-seventh, we put out an RFP for custodial services at Jefferson and Columbus Elementary School. Throughout the RFP process, we received nine bids. We formed a bid committee, which comprised of the director of facilities, the purchasing agent, the principal at Jefferson Elementary, the assistant principal at Nathan Hale, and house masters at Brian McMahon and Nora Kai, with the idea of having representatives from each type of school. Each bid was reviewed based on a criteria with different scoring measures, with twenty percent being on the ability to perform a service, twenty percent on the length of service or staff turnover, ten percent on organizational support and experience, ten percent on cost, ten percent experience in a school environment, and ten percent on completeness and information capability. And within those was a twenty-five percent measure on school background checks for the individuals within the school. After reviewing the bids and scoring the bids, the company that was providing the greatest level of service, the strongest background check criteria, and also affiliated with a union, thirty-two BJ, was United Services of America. United Services of America is a part of F'n Eco LLC, which incorporates both United Services, premier maintenance, and millil maintenance. Their proposal was for four and a half FTEs at both Columbus and Jefferson, a day custodian, a half midship custodian, three night custodians. Their cost proposal was for two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars for the total of two schools, which would be a savings of one-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand against current costs. They would perform all the work that is outlined in the RFP, as well as any work that would occur on weekends for any program that would occur outside of the daily scope of work. Additionally, we have the right to remove any individual that we deem unsatisfactory from our account immediately. We have the ability to terminate the contract within thirty days, if we give thirty days' notice. We have the right to provide instruction and clear criteria to the individuals within our school. They also have to meet a set standard of APPA ratings for cleanliness. If we find any individual unsatisfactory, one call to the company removes them from our, from our school. No employee of their company would be allowed in our school unless properly vetted and provided a security check at the cost of the United Services. The security check includes both local and state and federal fingerprinting, sex offender list, the terrorist watch list, social security trace. In fact, it's actually a more rigorous employment background check than the Norwalk Public Schools does for their own employees. They also have experience in a school setting. They have been providing custodial services to the Stanford Public Schools for a number of years. They've also been providing custodial services to schools in New York City. So they did have a significant amount of understanding about an educational setting and how it differs from an office setting. They have a very deep bench, is what they would call. So at, at any time, we would want a higher quality person. They have six hundred accounts, well over a thousand employees, and that would make it the ability to get the, kind of the best and brightest that they would have to offer.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Rivas?
Yes, you mentioned earlier, you said affiliated with a New York City-based services work is union local thirty-two B J. That would mean that the, the people that you're intending are, are, are union workers?
They are union workers.
So then, you, you, I don't, I don't believe that, that you can have two locals, different unions, and, and doing the same, performing the same job. Because that's conflicting, because I was under the impression that for you to have another union on the same premises, you would have to vote out one union. You cannot, I don't, I don't think that you can have two unions in the same shop.
We would not have the two unions in the school. Thirty-two BJ would be focused on Columbus and Jefferson, whereas our existing unions would be in the other seventeen schools.
Okay, and the, on this memo that you sent, I don't know, this is, is public information, correct?
Correct.
This was in the packet?
It was in the board.
So it was available to, to the citizens?
Correct.
Okay. It says, what does it mean? Has, has been reassigned to Norwalk Aquarium after a failed attempt to conduct cleaning services with in-house personnel? What does that mean exactly?
Correct. So earlier in the year, there was an issue regarding the Norwalk Aquarium being cleaned. They use premier maintenance, which is under the umbrella of United Services. The Maritime Aquarium had removed premier maintenance cleaning services, but then they had restored those individuals.
Okay, and then on the cost, you said the savings was two-hundred-and-forty-five?
One-hundred-and-eighty-two.
Okay. Why, if Jefferson is a much bigger building, it's a much bigger building, including portables, why is that less money than Columbus, which is most?
They would be using the same amount of FTEs as Columbus. So the recommendation is for four and a half FTEs at both Columbus and Jefferson. They would be responsible for all cleanable square foot space. And the, the reason being that the same, even though the, the school Jefferson is larger than Columbus, both are operating with the same number of custodians currently.
Ms. Murray?
Yes. First, just, just to be noted, we have two board members, but one is the chair of negotiation, is not here this evening for the vote. Is, is there any concern other than myself on that, in the month of August, that we're doing something like this and not having more board members at the table? Is there a serious question? That's my question, just, just a first.
Okay.
Is it? Oh.
Any, any concern? Ms. Mosby?
There's concern, because we're talking about voting on something that's going to have a major impact within our schools and the community, and I feel that this, that, you know, this vote, this important, we should have people here sitting in those chairs to make, you know, decisions. And, you know, and we don't even know why they're not here. I know these people have their own personal reasons why, but the, the bottom line is that with something this big, you know, we should have, you know, especially a, a negotiation chair should be sitting in that spot.
Okay. Ms. Rivas?
No, still.
I'm sorry. Back to you, Ms. Murray.
The other is, I know that we have to be physically responsible, as one of the largest budget, the city budget, but my thought is, is that
budgets, the city budget, but my thought is, is that there are efficiencies that we could look at. There are a number of other areas that we could actually look at and not use our eye call, put at risk our students. I heard, Rich, when you spoke about the background checks, I'm in HR, I know exactly what those background checks are like, okay? And my thought is, I don't want to be sitting on the board and somebody, something slips through. You can't get that back. I think this is my same position I had when we were on curriculum, because we talk about experimenting with our children. You know, I just have something about the fact of safety for our children, and I don't feel that because they put something, they have great press. I understood, I heard exactly what you said, but my thoughts are that we have to think first about our children. And every child, every child, needs to be considered on this. So for that reason, I know there are other areas we could look at, but the safety, it's, I'd say, the press sounds good, if something happens to one of our students, this is going to be on this board. So my thought is, is that that's something that we need to take a second look at, or even a third look at, the safety of the students.
Okay. Ms. Mosby?
And I know a few minutes ago, we were talking about surveys, parents' involvement, getting more parents at the table. The last couple of meetings, parents, they are the ones at the table. They're up there asking, telling us what they want. They want what they have now. And if we sit here and move ahead and just ignore them, then how can we go to the table and say, yeah, we want you to come, when you're not listening to them? I'm listening. I'm hearing, hearing you guys. I heard you before, I'm reading the emails, you're saying that you feel comfortable with what you have, you're saying that you're bonded with these people, they're bonded with your children, you want to feel comfortable? Okay, we just sat here and put some central office positions in place to make it comfortable for central office to work. That's fine. So what about making it comfortable for the parents to have a peace of mind when they go to work, or whatever they do, when their kids are sent to school? Why can't we take that into consideration? We're taking about making sure central office is fine, so what about... And one more thing is that, with the, I keep hearing that we're going to have a saving, we're going to have a saving. Are we that in the hole that we have to do this move now? Are we that in the red? Seriously? That's all we have to, I mean, are we? Why, why are we doing it now? Are we in the hole? That's all I want to know.
Ms. Rivas?
Yes, and I noticed that we were also, with the presentation that Dr. Rivera gave, and we spoke about the administrators' evaluation, the teachers' evaluation, and then what about the custodial evaluations? What about the culture? We've already have a good culture and a good relationship with what we have in our schools. The children love the people who work there. And if we are to build the culture, then it has to be the entire building. So then, are one of the criterias, are these culture-sensitive services that we're going to be using, are they going to be on board with the vision of Norwalk, and putting everyone on the same page, and everyone having a good culture, a good understanding of how the workings of the building is going to be like? You know, so I'm very concerned with this, and frankly, I myself, if this were to go on a vote now, I do not believe in privatization, and I will not be voting for this.
And I'm going to take the stand as well, that I will not be supporting this. I'm going to stand with the parents, the children, and the community, the custodians, the maintenance people, security people, and the people who they feel are family. The last week, we had a speaker that came up and said that she went through this entire school system, she graduated, and she graduated law school, and she had bonded with these, with people in the school. So I'm going to stand with that, because I don't know what's coming in, and I do not want to sit there and have any effect on our children, because when you start changing things around for them, if they're not familiar with these people, and people do something or they're not comfortable with, it could have a lasting effect, like the gentleman that said earlier today about how his child felt when he saw something. So I'm going to put the children first, I'm going to put the parents right there with them, and I'm going to stick to not approving this.
Ms. Keith?
I spent a lot of time looking through this packet and this RFP, and I have, Rich, I'm glad you're here, so you can stay up here for a little bit. As far as references, it states currently providing custodial services for Stanford Public Schools and has had this assignment for many years, favorable reference checks. Can you share with us some of these that you know off the top of your head?
Sure. We did call the Stanford Public Schools to get their opinion on United Services when we decided that was the optimal vendor. They've had them for a number of years, they've actually renewed their agreement with them. They were very, very favorable in regards with what they do, in terms of both their cost and how they clean the schools, and their overall maintenance, their ability to interact with the schools, their comfortable, their comfort level with being in a school environment, the ability to remove an individual at will. If they find somebody who is either not a right fit for that school's culture, or somebody who's not really making the APPA standards that they want, they talked at great length about the ease to have that individual removed from their school and replaced with another individual from United Services.
How quickly is that individual replaced?
Within the next day.
Okay.
They also talked at great length about the background checks that they've used, and we actually invited many of the companies in for one-on-one interviews, because we wanted to get a better understanding of the RFP that they proposed. So we brought in United, as well as a couple of others that were in the running. And one of the things that they really spoke at great length was their background check. The fact that not only do they do local and state fingerprinting, they do federal fingerprinting, they do social security traces, they do terrorist watch lists, they do sexual predator reviews, any federal and state criminal record checks, and that before any individual in the Stanford Public Schools was placed, they received those background checks before anybody was placed.
And how many years does Stanford use this service for?
I don't have the number of years off the top of my head, but it's been over four years.
Over four years, okay. As far as the background checks, how often is that done, as far as sexual predator, terrorist, whatever? I mean, how often are they doing these checks?
They do it annually, and then any time any individual knew that enters the school.
Okay.
So if an individual were to leave United Services, as an example, to pursue other opportunities, and a replacement was put into the school, that individual replacement couldn't be put into the school until the background check was done.
Can I keep asking questions?
Absolutely, you have the floor.
Promotes an employee incentive program for good behavior. Can you...
One of the reasons that was important, one of the larger scoring metrics was staff turnover. Ideally, we would like a company that doesn't have a tremendous amount of staff turnover. When reviewing the nine bids, there were a couple of companies where staff turnover was very significant, and they marked very low, and we were not interested in those companies. One of the things that they do is they promote and reward their individual employees, both monetarily, with rewards in terms of good jobs and performance and evaluations. They also have employee of the month programs, where they recognize individuals. They do a lot of work in-house for their company to attract and maintain and retain fit employees.
Termination of agreement, can you talk more about that? I know that you mentioned earlier about a thirty-day notice.
Sure.
So if we're using the service, and after thirty days...
If for whatever reason, we decide we are not happy with the services, or we do not want to go in this direction, all we have to do is give thirty days' notice, and the contract terminates.
So it's null and void?
Correct.
I mean, it's, okay. For me, before I can actually move forward on this, or consider moving forward on this, I would require a request that we have some type of evaluation or survey done, and that would go out to all Columbus and Jefferson staff, which would be our principal, curriculum director, assistant teachers, social worker, psychologist, food workers, anyone that has contact with this new company that we might be taking on. I think that's the missing link for me. I think that's a critical piece, that we have that survey, or we have that evaluation. I would also propose that we get that out within six months. Since we have our new facilities director, Mr. Hodel, I would like to see if he could put something like that together, that we can hand out to all of our staff at Columbus, and that includes everyone, anyone that has contact with this new service. For me to feel somewhat comfortable, that would need to be done. And that would show how they're doing, evaluate them critically, so we can have something, something tangible that we can look at. I would also suggest that Mr. Hodel would make pop-up visits to both Columbus and to Jefferson, to just pop in without notice, and not with United Services doing that.
Correct. Mr. Hodel would be evaluating operationally how the individual company is doing within the school, and he would make regular visits to both Columbus and Jefferson, to ensure that they're meeting the APPA standards and the SIM standards that were outlined in the RFP, to make sure, not only that we are obviously getting the savings economically, but from an operational standpoint, they are adhering to everything that they agreed to.
And how would he be doing that?
He would make random visits, but they would be very regular, to both Jefferson and Columbus. He would inspect both the hallways, classrooms, offices, gymnasium, cafeteria, to ensure that they meet his standards that are outlined in the APPA standards.
Okay, would that be done on a weekly basis? I mean, I would suggest that that's going to be done, like, often?
Very often.
Weekly?
Yes. Our manager of custodial and maintenance operations visits about five schools a day to get all nineteen schools done in a week. Mr. Hodel would be in charge of Columbus and Jefferson.
Okay. I'd also would request, as a board, that we would be receiving, if we go through on this, on a monthly basis at least, what the, not the evaluations, but what Mr. Hodel is finding, what the positives are, and if they aren't positive and there's negatives, we have to figure out a way that we can fix that.
Okay. Is that it? Heidi?
That's it, yes.
That's it? Okay. Jack, then, Artie. Mr. Chairman.
I understand, I've been hearing, you're getting lots of emails also, from some families that we heard, basically every custodian that's come to us, and I've heard how they're going to lose their job, they're going to lose their benefits, the poor gentleman, I understand, my heart goes out to him, that lost his wife and his child, thirteen is worried about him losing his job. Are any of our, this has been reported all over, everywhere you see, they're going to lose their jobs and benefits. Is anyone losing their jobs or benefits?
No custodian will lose their job or their benefits.
Not one?
Not one.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kassamas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a lot of community conversation over this, over the past several weeks. There's a lot of, I think there's a lot of lack of information that's gone out, and there's some misinformation that's gone out as well. I appreciate what Mr. Chairman Monti just asked, I was going to ask the same question. I've heard from some custodians in emails that they fear of losing their jobs, and thank you for emphatically stating that they will not lose their jobs, benefits.
Not one custodian will lose their job.
Not one employee of ours will lose that. So I appreciate that.
We would not...
Hold a second. You have the floor, Mr. Kassamas, please proceed.
Voice out of nowhere. I also put, I spent the entire weekend looking at the contract, reading the blogs, and reading emails, and just trying to understand where we're at with this, so we can make a right decision tonight. I also put a list of questions to you, and you responded, and for the record, I'd like to read some of those and ask you, again, if you don't mind, so everybody, this is nothing going on behind the scenes, and everybody understands the questions that I also asked. One of those was the question that Ms. Doolive asked as well, because I had a concern that we are not supervising, or we are not allowed to supervise. You stated in your email that that is not the case. Can you please explain that?
Sure. In that paragraph, it states that we do not have the right to supervise or terminate their employees. We cannot terminate their employees as their employees, but what we can do is immediately remove them from our account. In terms of supervising, the evaluations that the individual employee gets is from their company. We evaluate the companies and the individuals on our school basis, so that they meet the APPA standards and the SIM standards. And based on that evaluation by the Director of Facilities, Bill Hodel, we can make that recommendation to remove that individual from the account. But if we were to remove that individual from the account, it doesn't necessarily mean that that individual is terminated from United Services. We don't have the right to terminate their employees, just as they don't have the right to terminate our employees.
Okay, specifically, can, let's say, a principal tell one of these contractors to clean something up?
Yes.
Okay, so that is supervising?
Yes.
Okay, so, again, just to be clear, now, what about for, in case of Columbus, because they're going to be outsourced, they have, they're a special model, they have assemblies every Friday. Will these people be setting up the chairs, sound systems?
Yes.
Posters?
So they would have to set up the chairs, the sound systems, the posters, clean up after the assembly. If there is an event that's happening on a Saturday... Correct. They would be responsible for maintaining that event and ensuring that event is set up properly, and then obviously taken down once the event is over.
Okay. More questions?
Yeah, you have the floor.
I'm also on a safety committee. I know Mr. Bocanfuso was part of the safety committee over Columbus. How will they be involved?
Sure.
Who will sweep through the rooms, make sure there's no kids? We know Columbus is on lockdown a lot.
Yes. Their lead custodian, which would be the day custodian, would go through each room to make sure that there's no children involved. They would perform all the same tasks that the individual custodians who are there now do.
So they will go through the same training as our people did?
Correct.
Okay, and that custodian there will be there consistently?
Yes.
Every single day?
Yes, one of the reasons we picked United was that of all the companies that submitted a bid, they had the lowest turnover ratio.
Okay. Sorry, just want to make sure, I got to answer all the questions. There was also a statement made, I don't know who made it, but somebody said that we are stuffing our pockets with the cost savings. Can you tell us where the savings is going to go?
Sure. We could redirect some of that savings into the classroom, whether it be with teachers, or aides, or textbooks, or technology. Additionally, there's not a never-ending well of revenue that the city can generate. The city doesn't have unlimited pockets, their ability to increase revenue on a year-to-year basis largely depends on the grant list, the ability of the city to generate income. So we can't always consistently expect to get three or four percent appropriation. So we are looking for opportunities and ways that we can deliver the same, if not better, services through all our schools, will be financially efficient as well. So when there are times in which the city cannot fund the necessary components of the school district, we're not going through these massive budget cuts that have happened in the past.
Two more questions?
Yes, please.
Is it all right, two more questions? Two more questions. Will they be there to open up the building, close the building?
Yes.
They'll have keys?
Yes.
To the building?
Yes.
Fire alarm goes off in the middle of the night?
Yes.
Okay. Finally, I have this last question. We received a lot of emails about Mr. Bocanfuso, what a great job he's been doing over there. I know, I've met with him as well, just to sit and chat with him about his responsibilities. From what I understand, from what you state here, it says, you're reading just for the record, that Mr. Bocanfuso is the head custodian in Columbus, but he's acting head. Even if we did not outsource any school in a district, Mr. Bocanfuso would not have remained in Columbus.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
That is due to?
He's an acting head custodian. One of the head custodians who was there prior had a heart attack, another one injured his leg. So they've actually had a number of head custodians who have been out on disability. So Mr. Bocanfuso has been as an acting head custodian. Those individuals, when they are cleared for work, do have the right to go back to their job. Their job is not taken away from them just because they're on disability. So he is an acting head custodian, working the early morning shift. His normal shift is actually a mid-shift. So his mid-shift would have to be honored once the acting head custodian title is removed.
Okay, so you state, though, that according to union bumping rules, he would be moved?
He would have been moved to another location, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Murray?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to go back to the fact of, I understand the marketing on United, they're a big company, and evidently Stanford and other districts use them, but what I do know, that they will not tell you any incidents that they may have. So now, anything that they present to us is going to be a long report, and, you know, it can be lack of information, misinformation, but my mind goes to common sense when it comes to our children. There's no one sitting here that wants to come and find out that something has happened, right under their nose, right on, you know. So monitoring, I think you're going to have hands-on, it's just not humanly possible in the size of the district, of our size. One of the things, too, is I'm not sure whether this board knows the extent of the involvement, especially at the elementary school, of our custodians, lack of better words, or family. But the fact of it is, is that there are ways of being efficient, if there's discussion, open discussion, but there's no way that you can guarantee that every child will be safe. My thought is that I can't support anything that I think, come back to this table to say that I'm sorry that something happened, under the fact that we have outsourced. There's just nothing that you can say, because my thought is, is that there are other ways to save money. And that's where I stand on that. that there are other ways to save money. And that's where I stand on that position.
Any other comments? Did you have your hand up for Heidi?
Go, Jack, you know.
No, okay, Mr. Chairman.
Let me ask you, I had some people that came up here tonight, and I heard saying that we've played games with the unions, that we snuck this in, and so on. When was this actual piece of attrition put into this contract? How long ago?
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three. And it was voted on then, that this would happen?
Yes.
And was the union participated in this discussion?
Yes.
Who was on this board that ratified this? Was it two thousand and three?
I'm not sure who the, it was two thousand and three when it was first put into the contract, and then every three years after that, it was voted on it.
Every three years after, so you're saying two thousand and six as well?
Two thousand and six, two thousand and nine, two thousand and twelve.
So this goes back to two thousand and three and two thousand and six that this was approved?
Yes.
And with the help of the union?
It was agreed to by the union.
It was agreed to by the union?
Yes.
So any claims here of being, we're being shysters, and we're doing things behind the scenes, and the whatnot that I've been hearing erroneously, from what I believe, is that, is just that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Who's Keys?
Rich, you said the savings would be about a hundred and eighty-two thousand?
Yes.
Okay, and so that's an extra amount that we would have?
Yes.
Hundred and eighty-two thousand. And I know this is thought, this has actually been weighing heavily on me as far as the teacher assistance. With that type of savings, we could hire teachers, we can hire more assistants. I mean, I'd like to put this on record, you know, this would happen down the road, but I think some of that saving should go back to our teacher assistance as far as loss of benefits, which they haven't had benefits in many, many years that were taken away, their medical and dental. So that's just something I wanted to put out there.
Okay. Ms. Rivas, then, Ms. Mosby.
Yes, Mr. Wu, how much excess savings? I would like a dollar amount. On the school year two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, what is the total amount of excess savings that we have to date in our operating budget, or in our capital, whatever, the entire amount? What, what total amount do we have for that school year?
Sure. We are planning on having a finance committee tomorrow, where we're going to discuss the end-of-the-year operating results. We did end the year with a surplus for the second year in a row. The surplus is about 1.8% of our operating budget.
Can I have a dollar amount?
Sure.
How much money?
Two point nine million.
So we saved, the school year two thousand and thirteen, two point nine million dollars we have in excess savings?
Uh, yes.
Presently?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mosby.
Thank you. Okay. I, I'm sorry, I just had to process that first. I do apologize, because I'm hearing two point nine million surplus, and I'm hearing we're sitting here trying to get rid of people who, you know, people are comfortable with for a hundred and eighty-two thousand savings, to get a couple of, so, yeah, you know, I mean, sorry, okay. You know what, these workers, you know, they are Norwalk residents, and they're, they are taxpayers, they're voters, and the hardest thing here is that they are board employees. And to sit here and make this as an example of how we treat our employees, I know there was a comment made earlier about corporation and all that, and, you know, I don't care about that. It's just that even corporation cares about their employees. If we sit here and we act like, like, like they mean nothing, that their parents mean nothing, and we're going to take the chance on bringing someone because of their credentials in Stanford, which it's, it's not Norwalk. These children know Norwalk, and then basically telling them that after thirty days, we can get rid of them and bring someone else in. So that's putting your kids through some more changes, the parents through more changes. I mean, come on, let's be consistent. We keep saying, let's be consistent, let's get parents involved, let's keep the kids happy. Why don't we start thinking about that? Let's be consistent, keep parents involved, children happy, and keep this family together. And right now, hearing that with this two point nine surplus, surplus, and a hundred and eighty-two thousand that we're haggling over, I mean, I'm sorry, whatever excuse there is, it doesn't make sense. It really doesn't.
Yeah, one last question.
Ms. Rivas?
Yes, I know that Ms. Keys spoke about this extra savings that we can hire teacher assistants, teacher aides, and teacher program. We can also do that with the two point nine million, correct?
No, the two point nine million was largely generated by accrued savings from positions that were either vacant for the whole year or part of the year. From a financial control measure, the worst thing that you can do is use savings from a vacant position to hire another position, because when that vacant position is filled, then now you have two positions filled with one revenue source, it will ultimately lead to a deficit.
Okay, sir, then I would like, I am requesting, I don't know if this is okay, but I am requesting a breakdown of the two point nine million, according to each account, each object, and each project number, so I can see what totals to the two point nine million, in every area that we have access.
We'll have that at the finance committee tomorrow.
Okay, because the budget, the budget transfers as well, I have this concern, we're having these budget transfers with this excess money, all of a sudden, we have all these excess monies being transferred into different accounts. And I, I just want a whole breakdown of the entire account numbers with project codes and whatever. I'm requesting that information.
Okay, you can generate a report.
Yeah, I mean, that's given every month to the board, monthly, financially.
Ms. Mosby.
Yeah. Rich, with this, this hundred and eighty-two thousand savings, I really didn't hear anything when we, when we finally beefed up central office with all these different positions, which I believe that I did put it on record before about us, and I believe Ms. Murray did the same with us, you know, filling up central office. And at that time, I didn't hear anyone sit there and talk about anything of trying to get the savings to put, to put against. So I'm, I'm, you know, I'm a little concerned at this point that we finally beefed up central office, and when we're in the schools dealing with our children, our parents, and their safety, that we can sit here and, and don't think twice about it. So I'm, I'm still back on that comfort level. I mean, it's a comfort level, peace of mind for central office. I'm all for central office to have whatever they want, but I'm all for parents and kids to have safety and what they want, and their own peace of mind. And I think as a family, we need to think about that and, and stop and get past this, whatever it is. I don't know what it is, but let's get past it, and let's start working together by making sure that everyone's happy, especially if you want to get more parents involved. You said it dropped from forty-five to twenty-two? It's going to drop more. I mean, we need to sit here and start figuring out a way how to try to get more people involved and listen to what people have to say. And address them when they come to the mic, because a lot of people come to that mic there, and they feel that when they leave there, that they're, that they're not being addressed with what's being put out there.
Ms. Murray.
Have you heard of the efficiencies that were identified, that we chose to go in this room, in this direction?
I'm sorry.
Were there any discussion about efficiencies in other areas?
Yes, one of the efficiencies that we did explore and that the board did approve earlier in the year was going with Rova Killiard as a way to maximize the buying power of the school district and its nineteen schools in purchasing things like custodial supplies and equipment. Additionally, we have a purchase, new purchasing agent on board, who's been on board for a number of months, and she's been looking at more opportunities to put things out to bid that in the past haven't been put out to bid. And she's working very closely with the new facilities director, Mr. Hodel, to identify any opportunities within his budget that we could put out to bid as well.
Okay, let me be a little clearer. Have we spoken to the staff, the custodians? Because there's efficiencies that you can find in the buildings, only they can find and identify. Has there been any discussion with them as far as what those things and items could be?
I have requested that Mr. Hodel meet monthly with Mr. Schuler and another representative, so that they can discuss both concerns on their side as well as Mr. Hodel's side. And I know from, for the start of the school year, he has met with head custodians to discuss the progress made within their schools.
Prior to this, is what I'm asking?
Yes.
And what was the outcome of the meeting?
There, there was discussions about territories being discussed, so rather than having certain square footage limitations that might have been applicable in the previous contract, it's not, looking ahead to how we could better deploy our staff. A big savings and efficiency in terms of manpower would be the use of equipment. One of the reasons we went with Rova Killiard was the ability to purchase equipment. And one of the things that we did purchase in the last fiscal year was approximately a little over fifty thousand dollars worth of new equipment, with the hope and the idea being that rather than having a custodian who might have to take seven or eight hours to do a job because he's doing it manually, will now have the benefit of having an equipment and a piece of machinery that'll allow them to do it in a couple hours, thus freeing themselves up to do other items.
And that was the extent of following up with the actual meeting, the outcome of that, and efficiencies?
As of right now, yes. As of right now, yes, but they're ongoing.
So we've taken this step to go in this direction without fully exploring the efficiencies that were identified?
We look for efficiencies in every area, every month.
Prior to this, making this decision?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Ms. Keys, did you use it? No, you don't?
Quick question.
Yes.
Ms. Keys asked that we do a review probably after six months, I think that's what you said?
Yeah, at least six months.
If after six months, we see it's not working, if it passes tonight, can we revert to where we were before?
Yeah, we would just have to give thirty days' notice to the vendor, and we would terminate the contract.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Ms. Rivas?
I wanted to clarify from Artie, what exactly did you ask? Being, can it be reverted? That means then we will not do privatization?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? Because I don't think that's not what you're saying.
Yes, we could. So if, if for whatever reason, if after a six-month evaluation, we feel that the company's either not doing a good job, or we're not happy with the type of quality that we have, we have the right to terminate this contract at any time, providing we give thirty days' notice. So if we choose to go that route, we can give United Services thirty days' notice to terminate that contract. And if the decision is to go back to the existing model, that is something we could do.
And that would be?
I'm sorry.
That would be until another, another United Services comes our way again?
Well, the discussion would have to be whether or not we would want a different contractor, or whether we would want to go back to the existing model that we have.
Okay. Ms. Murray, then, Ms. Keys.
My comment is that it sounds good, that we can reconsider it, but that's not how it plays out here. It's too much. If we go this far, that's where we're going to be.
Yeah, that's true.
So that's just a comment.
All right, Ms. Keys?
Like Mr. Kasimis had mentioned, and I had brought up earlier about the six months, I mean, I think the key is to make sure that these, Mr. Hodel, if he's the one that's actually writing these, excuse me, evaluations or surveys out, that all the employees at Columbus and Jefferson fill these out.
Sure.
Anyone who has contact with the service would need to do that. And then we'd need to, excuse me, compile that, do an analysis on it, and then figure out what our next steps are after six months.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Mosby.
Yeah. Who's going to monitor the person who's supposed to evaluate? I mean?
Mr. Hodel.
I know, but who's going to, you know, evaluate Mr. Hodel?
Oh, Mr. Hodel, I would.
Make sure that.
I would be evaluating.
Who's watching that, as they said, who's watching the chicken coop, you know? I mean, I mean, basically, right now, right now, I'm, I'm, because I feel extremely strong about our children and their safety and the parents out there, I'm going to put this out there. You, we all know that in six months, no matter what, if it's working or not, you're going, somebody's going to say it's working. So who's going to be the one, the person that's going to come in and make sure that, the neutral party? Because right now, we have this two-way thing. There's one person that wants it, other person that don't. Who's, who's going to be the neutral party? Because Hodel is going to book, he's going to be beholden to the person that tells him to go through the schools and do the evaluation.
The principals also on the side.
You know, I mean, I mean, we got to seriously, you know, think about this. If we want to move down this direction and put our kids into this type of situation, in six months, believe me, it's going to be, no matter what, whatever going to happen is going to be barriers. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none. Proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the contract with the United Services, please indicate. One, two, three, four, all opposed. One, two, three, motion carries, contract is approved.
No.
All right. Next item is item six A, discussion of possible action on ECS transportation contract. Rich, I'm sorry, you got to come back on ECS. Rich, one more. Okay. Rich, take us through the ECS transportation contract.
Sure. Three, four years ago, the award was given to First Student for transportation for all services, both special ed and non-special ed alike. We've had a growing number of out-of-district placements within Norwalk over the past three years. First Student is having difficulty providing adequate transportation for the growing number of students that are being outplaced. As a result, we approached First Student about whether or not there was any additional services they could provide within the contract scope to meet the requirements of the out-of-district placed students. And after discussion with Corporation Council and the city's purchasing agent, and the review of the RFP in two thousand and twelve, we do have the right to reopen that contract for an addendum to contract with the second bidder, which was Relia Transportation, to provide services for a select number of out-of-district routes, eight routes. Relia Transportation is bonded, it was the second contract ranking within the prior RFP. The additional cost is approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. We would not need any additional funding to fund this, as we do have savings from routes that were designed by our transportation coordinator that would fully fund that small addendum.
Okay. All right, Chair, we're going to entertain a motion to approve the proposed contract with ECS transportation. Is there a motion?
But, but, excuse me, but this is information reports, I wanted to ask questions.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make a motion, and then we'll do the questions.
But why are we making a motion? It says discussion and possible action.
Right. It's standard process under Robert's Rules of Order.
No, it's under information reports. It says, under an action item, there's, we haven't determined it's an action item yet, because we, it's under information, so we're having a discussion. And then, and then it goes, doesn't it? Because it's not on an action item.
Whatever. Sure.
No, it's not whatever. It's, it's not whatever.
Ask your question.
I, no, no, it's not whatever. It's, you know, I, I just want to.
I told you what the proper procedure under Robert's Rules is.
Then why wasn't it, why wasn't it on the agenda?
You don't want to follow it.
It's not that I don't want to follow it. On the agenda, on the agenda, it's not listed under an action item. It's under, it's under information reports. So if it's under action, why wasn't it put under action?
Possible action ECS transportation contract.
Discussion and possible actions, but we didn't finish the discussion.
Like I said, go ahead.
I don't want to do whatever I want. I want to do what's correct. If you're saying that I'm doing whatever I want to do, I don't think that's correct at all. I want to follow the procedure.
Okay.
And according to what I'm.
My ruling as the chair, under Robert's Rules of Order, is that a motion needs to be made and seconded before the discussion can proceed.
If it's an action item.
And it is an action item. That's my ruling as chair.
Okay, so.
You can appeal that ruling if you want to.
No, no, but my, then my question to you is, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
Under information and reports, then why did the executive committee put it under information and reports and not under action item? For discussion?
The staff requested it be put there.
The staff requested for it to be put there?
Mm-hmm.
For the purpose of?
Discussion and possible action.
I guess you're not understanding what I'm saying.
Ms. Murray.
No one understands what I'm saying.
Yes, you do, I do understand. And what we're looking at, is there a reason why staff needed this to be put on and acted on on the same night?
We want, because of the start of the school year.
Excuse me?
For the start of the school year.
Before the start of the school year. But they got something in place already.
The school year will start before we have our next meeting.
But, but it was also said earlier that the routes were already been practiced and everything, so you already have this person in place?
In-district routes have been prepared. The, the discussion here is for out-of-district routes.
So that has not been prepared yet?
They are still not finalized.
But you, it was said earlier that the routes are ready.
The, what you said was the in-district routes were prepared and done.
Okay, okay, okay. So I don't know, what part am I, under the possible action area, or am I under discussion? Because I would like to have a discussion. He came to the mic, so I just.
All right, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the contract, following which we will have discussion. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Chairman Monti moves. Is there a second? I will second. Mr. Kasimis seconds. All right, motion is made and seconded to approve the contract discussion. Ms. Rivas?
Okay, you mentioned during the discussion, you mentioned First Student, correct?
Correct.
Okay, First Student is not on this paper at all whatsoever?
Correct. First Student and ECS are the same company. And they are a primary...
It's not the same company.
They are a primary vendor for transportation. What we want is to addend the con, addent, make an addendum to the contract to allow us to use Relia Transportation for eight routes.
But there was no explanation about First Student in, in this, in this memo that you, that you stated?
In the second, in the first sentence, I mentioned First Student to continue...
I can't see the first sentence. I just remembered it from, from what it was read to me. So then I just made big notes on the side. But there's nothing there mentioned about First Student. There's nothing there mentioned about First Student. And, um, the, the, the company that you want to use is Relia?
Relia, R-E-L-I-A.
Okay, okay, so Relia. So then, it was the third?
Correct.
Bitter?
Correct.
Earlier, you said the second bitter?
I misspoke.
Excuse me?
I misspoke. It was the third bitter.
Okay, so who were the first and second?
Uh, First Student was the first. I do not have the name of the second off the top of my head.
So First Student was the first bitter?
Correct.
Okay, so, and, and, and I have some concerns, because what is, what does it mean when you, when you stated ride share?
Uh, so ride sharing with surrounding towns, it's essentially a way to have shared services for transportation.
Now, that didn't explain it to me. What do you mean, ride share? That means that a Norwalk child would be on the same bus with a Wilton child?
Correct.
I don't think, you can't, I don't, I don't believe you could do that. I put two students from two different school districts on the bus, especially when it's special needs child. You have a special, you, you, you can't mix children. You don't, are they the same age group? Are they the same...
They would be going to the same special needs out-of-district placement.
It doesn't matter, but there's a certain age group that you, that a child could be in the same classroom with. But I don't know, it's between a, a three-year, a three-year age difference. But you cannot put a twenty-year-old Wilton child with, with a seven-year-old, uh, uh, special needs child.
Correct.
If they're doing a ride share, you cannot do that.
Correct.
And they cannot share, the other towns cannot share to you what children and what are their behaviors like from the other, other towns riding on that bus. I mean, you, you have, you have different types of child that, that have behavior issues. How, how are you going to ensure the safety of that child if they're doing ride share? Because I don't think that that's really allowed.
We currently do ride share. The company has the names of the individuals they would pick up within the different districts and where, what location they would go. And it works the exact same way as, as any other ride share that we would do or any other transportation from, for a student.
But what is the aging?
They, they would all be grouped at, within a plus or minus of two, two years, two to three years.
Are the parents aware?
Yes.
That they, that they're on the bus with different children that, from different school districts?
Yes, they understand that they're part of a ride share, yes.
I, 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 I'm, I'm very concerned with that, because I don't, I don't believe, I would like some proof of this, because I do not believe that that is possible, that, that should be done. I don't think it's allowed as far as the IDEA. So, uh, on, under the IDEA, I wanna see if there are any regulations support, because there's a big section on transportation as far as how special needs children are transported from the school district. I don't want, I want to make sure that there, there is nothing legal issues that can be pending here, that either the bus company...
We did have this reviewed by Corporation Council.
That, uh, uh, well, Corporation Council does not specialize in special education. Okay, so I would like, I would like that to be weighed against the federal, the federal act on, 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 on the regulations that we should be following for that. Now, um, you said that the available funding, you, you have to, so we're doing this money transfer business again.
Correct.
Uh, so you're taking from one account, we're gonna take ten thousand, from another account, we're taking sixteen thousand. So on one of the accounts, you don't have, you do not have, all you have is the account code, but no object code and no project code. And it, you're not specifying where this object code and, and project code is coming from on the ten thousand. And, and, and then on the sixteen thousand, you do have an object code and a project code, but I don't know exactly what, what is that? What does that entail? And if there is a time, a time, uh, problem with this, I, how come there was no budget transfer then sheet to, to go along with our budget transfers that we approved? Because if this has, school starts next week. So if school starts next week, then this money will be transferred without our approval. So then it would not come to the board for a transfer.
We would have to come to the board for a transfer at the next...
But what, when would it come to the board?
The transfer would come to the board at the next board meeting if this is approved.
Okay, also, my, my concern also, the contract that's attached here from corporate council, it says, it's a sample contract. So it, it, it talks about, this is a sample of what a contract, a transportation service contract should be like. So, but then, yet embedded in the contract, it says, entered into the agreement as of August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen. So this is not the actual contract, why the actual contract was not attached to this? So actually, we'll be approving a sample contract. And, oh, let me see. Now, okay.
I know, I know you're asking.
Okay. No, okay. So now, next week starts, now we have these eight out-of-district routes. So then, if school starts next week, how is Relia going to have enough time? Because they need a week before preparation to run the routes.
All the routes have been pre-planned by Relia in conjunction with our transportation coordinator.
I don't mean planned, I mean the actual runs. The runs of the, of, of, of the pickups of the children have to be simulated.
Everything has been planned for the approval of this. So everything is in place to hit the ground running for the start of school.
Has the routes been actually performed? Have they gone to each house and...
Yes, they've done trial runs.
Okay, so then how could they do a trial run if the, if the board did not approve them yet? How could, how could the company go out and do the routes on these eight out-of-district children if they haven't been approved? So basically, everything's already happening without the board's approval. So you have to, you need the paperwork to back it up so we can approve it, to cover up everything that was supposed to have not been done without our approval. So why did we wait to the umpteenth hour, the last hour, to go and put this together at the last minute?
We received the increased number of special ed out-of-district students only a short time ago.
What short time ago?
Less than two weeks.
Less than two weeks. So then, in less than two weeks, it was determined that the transportation company was unable to provide the service?
They were coming to us last year, given the number of out-of-district students that have been outplaced compared to prior years, and letting us know that they were up to limitations in terms of what they could and could not do.
Right. So if the companies have their limitations and they could not provide the service, and you stated that First Student was one of our vendors, then why did First Student bid this, bid this PF RFP or bid this particular contract if, if, if they were not able to do it? And they were the first people to bid it?
Because the number of out-of-district placements has exponentially grown since that...
What was the difference of the growth of the, when First Student had it?
It has been more than a hundred percent of an increase.
Okay, so why did they, did they withdraw their bid?
The bid, the, the contract, the bids were done in two thousand twelve, and it's a four-year contract. So the new bids for the new contracts don't go out until October, November, with the new contract in place for July one of next year.
Okay, so then, Relia bid this in two thousand twelve?
Correct.
For this, for this, for this job?
No, they bid for the overall scope of work that was put out in two thousand twelve.
So these, uh, three bids, the third bidder, this is bidding from two thousand twelve?
Those were the companies that bid on the contract, which is the last contract, which was in two thousand twelve.
So did you find out whether all of these people were still interested in it?
Yes.
Okay, and the only one interested in it was this company?
No, but this is the company that made the most economical sense, and based on the limited amount of needs that we had, made the best sense for the district.
Okay, I wouldn't, I, I would need to know what other companies applied for the bid that were interested for this. And I did not know that First Student and, and ECS are the same company. They're two separate private companies and, 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 um, I don't see why you're saying that they're the same, um, the same company. Okay, okay.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Kasimis?
If I'm understanding correctly, we really have no choice, because this has to be done before school?
Um, the worst-case scenario is if we do not approve it, I mean, we have a little bit in terms of float, but we wouldn't be able to make it through the entire year.
Say, yeah, say the last part.
We wouldn't be able to make it through the entire year, so we would have to rearrange routes, but it would not get us through the entire year.
We'll start, we can't make it through, is that I...
Correct.
Okay.
I'm...
Ms. Mosby?
Okay, um, I'm, I'm, I was listening, and, and you said that, you know, this has been put out there, and this, this goes back again to us getting the information in a timely manner with everything so that we can make an informed vote tonight. And this right here is a prime example of that again. I, I mean, this is, by getting this in a board packet on a Friday, and now we're talking of, you know, have all these questions. If, if we, if we, if we received everything upfront, the names of every, everything, all the information, just give that to us, we will review it, and then we can make a decision. Now, we're sitting here at the eleventh hour, because things have already, already been put in place without the board, I, I'm just, well, I know I didn't know, so I can speak for myself, without the board having knowledge of, of these different, you know, first two, vendors, and now this here, and, you know, and, and, and it deals with our children. And these are the children with special needs, the most vulnerable children that we have in our system. And we're supposed to just sit here and just say, okay, I'm sorry, I can't. I can't, I can't.
Dr. Rivera?
I'm sorry, I, I, I need to jump in here. We received the names of students that needed transportation to out-of-district placement within the last couple of weeks. What we're trying to do is be as efficient as possible to make sure that they can get transportation to get to their sites. If there's a question or concern about whether or not you can have two children from two different districts, we can look into that. I don't personally know or professionally know the specific laws around that, but, but I'm su, my, my gut tells me that these companies have been transporting these students, and they would know, and they'd be aware, and they'd be expected to adhere to the laws. Now, when my businessperson tells me that we ran a process, and we had vendors come in, and, and, and we made a decision, a recommendation to bring to the board to try to be efficient before the start of the school year, and we've gone through some of those specifics, and I asked them about this, I'm satisfied with that. What, what you're asking for is such a level of detail that cuts at the crux of what sometimes causes, causes anxiety, because we, we sit here, and I'm not certain that some of the things we're talking about are within the purview of board detail, intimate detail versus what you hire me as your CEO to do with my staff. You hire me as a manager of this organization to sort through a lot of details. We have staff who do that, we bring it back to the board, and we're asking you to make a decision so we can give eight children transportation to where they need to be. And, and I'm telling you, I fundamentally believe we need to have a serious discussion about what is the role of the administration and the superintendent and his or her staff versus the role of the board, so we don't have to spend hours combing through endless detail. I'm, I'm sorry, but I have to say this.
And, uh, Ms. Murray?
Uh, Dr. Rivera, you don't have to be sorry about that. This is a conversation, I believe, this is what we keep running into, okay? And as the superintendent, as we've hired you, the question I would ask to my staff is why did we only get these numbers two weeks? Now I have to come to the board at the last minute. That's the kind of thing that I'm thinking that we are needing to look at. I heard you say that you just got them two weeks ago, so you're dealing with, with the situations handed to you. I'm going back and saying, why did we come up against that? Why are the numbers late? And something like that. And then it comes to us with urgency, because this is what happened. We didn't get the numbers until recently, for whatever reason, and I'm sure there is a reason, that maybe you can't share, but the fact of it is, is that it happened, and now we're up against it. But to be given this with a possible action without having that kind of information, that's all you have to do, is just share what has taken place. And then, all these questions, if we do have them, we'll ask them, and then we can move on and take a vote. But the fact of holding and, and coming up with something at the last minute, pushing for vote on the information reports, that's what causes you to pause and ask the questions. And that's as simple as that. But I, I've heard you say this before, and I know it is something that we still have to have a discussion on, because the fact of it is, there is information that's needed. But I believe it can be given to the board members, the board members who need it, because all board members don't need it or want it. But it can be, if we do this and we're upfront about what's actually going on, and set up a, a procedure or the place, the meeting, so that this can be shared. And that's really real, and sometimes you can just put it in writing and put it in the board packet. But I believe that's what we keep coming up against. Some board members need more detail than others, some will not. They will not ask a question. They already have the answers when they've come into this room. They don't know, and that's not what they're interested in. And that's okay. But there are nine board members, and that's what we'll have to look at. All elected officials.
Mr. Tremonti?
Thank you, Mr. Tremonti. As long as I've been on the board now, several, several years, I know, and I've gone to Tony, I've seen Tony the last few weeks, the numbers of the kids coming in is fluid. He's bouncing every week, wondering he should add a teacher here or take a teacher away from here. And this has been changing day to day for him. And not giving the superintendent the ability to move on the dime, if we have to do this quickly before school starts, there are people who are gonna file in late. Now, we don't have a crystal ball to normally tell the board two weeks ahead of time, or three weeks ahead of time, what we think is gonna happen. And sometimes this school, this shit needs, and this superintendent needs to react quickly. I think what he's doing here is fine, okay? And I think we all know, people sign up late and numbers change, especially as veteran board people know that's the way it goes. So I don't see anything wrong with what the superintendent is doing. I find, quite frankly, this whole discussion a waste of time. Thank you.
Ms. Mosby?
Going back again to, um, basically, the information, if the information was shared early enough, although the numbers might not have been there, but an indicator saying that, hey, we're looking at, I didn't even know that, that we were going to sit here and were talking about moving to another vendor. And here, according to this, it says that, um, that you have conversation with ECS and corporate council and to explore opportunity to open the current transportation. Now, if something was said back when this opened conversation was, was taking place, then maybe we would have had an idea that this might be coming down the road, and there might be some changes. But all, all I, I see here is that conversation was had with ECS and corporate council. I didn't know anything about it. I, I didn't even know that we were thinking about switching vendors. And that's what I'm trying to say. I, I understand the two weeks and getting numbers in late and all that, but the simple fact is that if we had advanced knowledge, that even a conversation of switching vendors would have been nice. But that didn't happen, and we're at this point now.
Ms. Rivas?
Yes, um, I, I would like to say that, two things. Um, okay, so the eight out-of-district people came, all right, during the school year, like Mr. Tremonti mentioned, there's always been changes. Maybe we get a swarm of kids coming in, people register late, people move into Norwalk and things. What were we doing in the past as well? Because, uh, I'm pretty sure that it has, it hasn't been every year consistent with the amount of out-of-district children. It has been fluctuating like that. Also, I wanted to say, I'm getting a little upset that when a person does ask a question, it's like everyone else is frustrated. Like if I ask a question, uh, uh, maybe Mr. Tremonti gets upset or looks upset, or maybe, uh, Mr. Lyons will get upset and look upset. Uh, uh, I don't know about Ari, I can't see him too clearly, but, you know, pe, people get upset, but you don't get upset with each other when you question, when you have a question for each other. If Mr. Tremonti had a question or, or something that he kept asking about, I'm sure that his response would not be the same. I, we, we, we have a right as elected officials to ask about things. We don't do this for, for the heck of it. I mean, I, I have children alone waiting for me at home. I'm tired. But the thing is, I, I, I want to ask questions to be, especially when it has to do with, with special education and it looks, and if you're approving a contract, everything's into place. I'm not, I'm not doubting, uh, uh, that you're a superintendent and you, and you would like to make sure that things, don't you doing the right thing? Yes, but then again, you know, questions can be asked, you know, like, like the, the sample contract. If, if this was, you had time to go to the, to the, to the, uh, with the city council to get, have their recommendation what they felt that had time to draw that up, what was the problem with bringing an original contract? What was the problem with saying, like, uh, Ms. Mosby mentioned, a quick email, shoot an email, well, I can't see it, but shoot a quick email saying, uh, uh, you know, we have a situation and, uh, out-of-district children, we, we have an increase of, like, when we have an over enrollment and we have to place a teacher, like it was said earlier. That's told to the board. So, so then, and then these bids, if it was from two thousand twelve and we were considering down the line, this is now two years later, then we should have had an open mind and discussed it at earlier time. Perhaps last year, we could have discussed, well, we're, we're gonna be thinking of opening up just in case we have an overflow of students because we always have to have precautionary measures. That's, that, that, that's proper me. We look at the before and the after picture and we have all of these visions for, for the school, so we have to have those kind of visions, just like Mr. Tremonti mentioned. Mr. Tremonti mentioned that being a veteran on the board, a lot of things can happen. A whole shooting of a whole bunch of kids are gonna be in one particular grade. So if we already know that as a pattern, then we should have had this in the back of our heads already. And if this was just a couple of weeks, how, my questions would be, well, maybe I'm gonna see if I can get someone to write me an email that I will be addressing, uh, the superintendent. When did it reach the common council's hands? You know, when, when exactly did this, did this happen? You know, I know it's important now and then it was mentioned earlier, I'm concerned all these people are gonna know the rest, that's what I'm saying. And, and, and as a former, uh, school bus driver for Greenwich, I've been a bus driver for fifteen years, school bus driver. Big bus, little bus, special ed bus, executive bu, all kinds of buses. Okay, I drive, I'm a driver, that was my profession. So, so the thing is, I know about that, I know about a run and I know about, you cannot, in, in Greenwich at least, you cannot transport, uh, two children from two different towns on the same bus. It cannot be done. That's why I am saying, please check on that because of my experience on what I've done as my profession and my life, my career. That's why I'm asking. You know, and don't, don't be angry. If we said, board members, we should get along and have discussions, then so be it, then let's have a worthy discussion. And we say we have to treat each other right, then respect my question and I'll respect yours. If I ask a question and you talk to me differently than you do to Mr. Tremonti or to Ms. Keys or someone else, then I have a problem with that. So, you know, I, I just had to, I had to let that out, I'm sorry. I had to say what I wanted to say. So.
Any other comments, questions?
Okay, I, I'd like to compliment, uh, Mr. Roodel and, uh, Dr. Rivera for a quick response to a problem that obviously came up, uh, probably after the last meeting of this board. Uh, I think it looks like they made a thorough review of possible solutions, found a competent supplier, uh, got a quick review done of the, uh, contract formed by the Corporation Council's office, uh, and have put something in front of us in time for us to act on it in a timely manner, uh, prior to the commencement of the school year. Uh, that kind of, um, fast, uh, action and, uh, and personal initiative should be complimented and I just want to let you know that I think you did a good job.
Any other discussion?
All right, we proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the, uh, contract, please indicate. One, two, three, four, all opposed. One, two, three. Which carries four to three, contract is approved. All right, next is committee representative reports. Uh, let's start with you, Ms. Mosby, finance.
Mr. Mosby.
I'm sorry, Ms. Murray.
That's all right.
My apologies.
We all have the same name on this.
My apologies.
It's the Ms.
If you two, if she was sitting in between you, I wouldn't do that.
It's the Ms.
Ms. Murray.
Yeah. Uh, here. Uh, finance committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. Um, and as you heard, um, we do have to look at, I believe, Dr. Rivera, uh, we are looking at, um, the fundings.
Yes, he, uh, yes, the, uh, surplus recommendations will be shared, uh, uh, by our business and finance person tomorrow.
Details of it.
Yes.
Yeah, details of it. Um, and, um, I think that's it for now.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Kusmas.
Nothing right now, sir.
Reports?
No.
Okay, um, let's see. Mr. Tremonti, any report? No report, okay. Com, that completes committee representative reports. Board member announcements, any announcements? Ms. Rivas.
Oh, well, um, I'm feeling much better if everyone, anyone's concerned. I'm feeling a little better. And, and also, I, I was thinking about the, the transfer we did for the, for Norwalk High School for the band, it was the thirty thousand we transferred, I don't know what month that was, and I was told we were doing that for both high schools so they can have an opportunity. I haven't, I haven't known of any transfer coming around lately for the other high school, for Brian McMahon as well.
We'll follow up on that for you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Other than that, I hope everyone's well.
Thank you. Anything else? Ms. Keys.
Speaking of, um, bands, Norwalk High School, um, is completing, this is their last week of their band camp, which is two weeks intense, eight AM to eight PM every night. And this coming Friday, they'll be performing at Andrews Field at about seven o'clock, so hopefully many of us can attend that.
Okay. All right, that'll, I'm sorry, Jack, I apologize, go ahead.
I'm, I've thanked the teachers and the people in this, uh, school district before and I wanted to do it once again. Uh, it's been a long day, I got up at six this morning to drop my son off to college for the first time, upper bensalier, and, uh, gonna do it again tomorrow, I gotta take my daughter down to Pratt. And, uh, they're gonna both be away for the first time, but I just wanna see how well they've done and I'm so proud of being a, a resident here of Norwalk and the job the teachers in this district have done. I'm very, very proud of what they've done here and what they've accomplished. I see, I see what the work that they've done and my kids and their accomplishments and all the other things that are just go up and beyond the school, the, the teachers and the schools, like the band and, uh, the other, other things that we provide, the music department, uh, how it's taught them, other things that are, I think are very important in making a well-rounded education. And, uh, my hat's off to all the teachers in this district and I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
May I dito, Jack?
Yeah.
Um, I, we have to drive my daughter to, um, college on, uh, Sunday and I do want, also want to thank, um, Norwalk School System. Uh, three of my kids are now out and I have one left and she's the most difficult, or four of them, but, um, but I do want to thank all the teachers, administrators, principals, everyone who was there for my kids.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Keys.
You know, we all, a lot of us have college kids, I have one that's going off on Friday to UConn, um, I echo Jack's and Artie's, um, what they were just mentioning about the great teachers that we have in Norwalk. I also want to, um, commend Dr. Rivera and everyone at Norwalk High School, NCC, as far as the, um, PTEC that's starting up this fall, I think they've already started, have they started like an orientation or?
Please thank, yes.
Okay, 'cause I've been hearing a lot of, um, favorable response back from parents that are just so engaged and so excited that their kids are doing this. So I know we've gotten some great press from the hour, um, thank you, about this, um, but I think it just really puts us on the map for Norwalk and having an amazing program like this.
Okay.
Sorry, one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to thank Cory for doing a great article on, uh, my Guatemala mission trip and my daughter. Um, I really appreciate that they, uh, enjoyed being in the paper.
All right. Um, Ms. Murray.
Uh, Dr. Rivera, the, uh, report that we received on, um, PTEC.
Yes.
Comprehensive.
Yes.
That was outstanding, I know I asked for some finance.
Yes.
For tomorrow night and, and numbers because of looking at the cost and what is actually happening now that we now have to, you know, from, I quote, put our money where our mouth is.
Yes.
But, uh, the, uh, I'm sorry, I've forgotten her name, um, the teacher that used to be a housemaster.
Ms. Amaker.
Amaker.
Karen Amaker.
Karen, Karen, yes. It's outstanding job and those are the type of reports where that takes up all the mystery and if there are any questions, you can always come back on that. Um, and I do, I saw Mr. Kusmas, he had made a comment on the email about it, but those are the type of things I think would eliminate a lot of this if that was done upfront, uh, not asked for, but actually keeping up front, whether, whether it's bridge or any of them, because I felt that was how we used to receive our reports.
Okay. Okay. All right, we'll move on next to item seven, approval of minutes. Chairman entertained a motion to approve the minutes dated August five, two thousand and fourteen.
I, I want to do a motion to table, but can through, do you want to go through your process, then I can say motion to table?
Uh, yes, you have to have a motion on the floor before you can table.
Okay.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve. Now, you know, if you make a motion to table, it's not debatable.
Okay, well, yeah, 'cause I, I know because.
You could discuss first.
Yeah, okay.